Million dollar supplement to school employees without delay. Let's be honest, we live in tough economic times. And a one-time addendum that will benefit our communities and the employees that live in these communities is the right thing to do for Gallup McKinley schools. The employees have earned this money. And the district and the board, please show your support and appreciation for the hard work of these employees, for the work that they perform every day. Please support Item 78. Thank you.
We'll continue on now with Frida Joe.
Good afternoon, board members, community members, and parents of your guardians. My name is Frida Joe, and I'm from Sayai Chapter. I'm actually from Crown Point, New Mexico. I was born and raised there. I went to high school at Crown Point. And I worked for the school district for 18 years. I retired. And now I work for Navajo Technical University of Crown Point. And just like what Ms. Jim just mentioned earlier, I truly received a copy of the recording that was being circulated. I received it from my sister, and I was shocked. I was really appalled. I have three granddaughters who attend in Crown Point. Two are at the high school. One is a senior, the other one's a freshman. And I have experienced all kinds of problems since the beginning of this school year. I've written letters. I've made phone calls. I've talked to administrators at Central Office. And each time I've been told, "We're looking into it. It's being investigated." I've followed the complaint process. Nothing. It's really discouraging. It's frustrating. I try to do what's right. I try to follow their process to have respect for our educational leaders. A lot of them are my friends that I worked with. But I have a responsibility to my family, to my children, to my community, to make sure that these kind of things don't happen to our children. The things that have been happening in our school at Crown Point High School have affected our students. Their ability to take classes. Their class scheduling has been just confusing to the students. Constantly changing. No teachers. Not enough computers for computer-based classes. I mean, what are we doing here? Are we setting up our students to fail? We're setting up our high school to fail? We're barely hanging in there with a grade of B and a C. We should be proud. We are compared to what some of the other schools are doing. But yet, we're setting up our children to fail. My granddaughter, who is in the ninth grade, she's in computer, Algebra I. She hasn't had a teacher in there since January. And we expect our children to perform well on test. I'm really appalled, and I've spoken to a lot of parents. They feel the same way. I grew up in Crown Point. We didn't have things like this. I can tell you that. I grew up with children from other races in that community. We were a close-knit community. I still communicate with a lot of my classmates who are not just Navajo, who are from other cultures, other races, other nationalities, religions. I don't know what this has come to, and I'm really concerned that in the future... We only have two months of school left. And I'm really concerned for our granddaughters, how they're going to finish this school year. And like Sunshine said, I want to implore to the board members to do what's right. You have a responsibility to ensure that our children receive the best education and that they have the best teachers, they have teachers in their classroom, and they have principals who can do their job without, you know, these kind of racist comments in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joe. Next speaker is Shokri Groo.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Shokri Groo. Actually, my maiden name is Salado. I was born and raised in Crown Point. I went to school there. The majority of my family went to school at Crown Point. In fact, my grandfather, I think, was one of the ones that started first when Crown Point Elementary opened. And I did receive a copy of that recording. And I'm a Catholic, so every Sunday I have to go to Crown Point's church. And you could feel the sadness in my community. And I'm here to speak up for my kids. I still have kids at Crown Point High School that call me Mom. And to hear this individual talk about our kids like that, our community members, and things that we cherish in our heart as far as being traditional. And I really hope you guys look into this matter. And I'm a... I now live in Thiru. I have two daughters, one at the high school, one at the middle school. And my son is at the Catholic school. I don't know if you are aware of that. Thiru Middle School, the girls' basketball team went undefeated. So now, these girls don't want to go to Thiru High School. They want to go to Santa Fe Middle School. They want to go to Winke. They want to go to Navajo Creek. I ask these girls, "Why?" Because of coaches, because of coaching staff. You would think that the coaches would make every effort to keep these girls together. They played together. They worked hard together. They went undefeated. But to hear my daughter's friends go off... Even my own daughter was at one of those schools at Thiru High School. There was something wrong. I have a senior at Thiru High School. She, hopefully, I think, is going to probably be the first at Thiru High School to graduate with an Associate's of Science. And her high school diploma. She will be going to the Mexico State as a junior. But her athletics is sad. She's been having a hard time. Coaching staff there. She quit, but she wants to get back on after he gathered herself. She was told, "You apologize to the coach before you get on." My daughter did nothing. And that's another thing I'm really tired of, is going through the channels. I emailed the principal. I emailed the faculty director. I emailed the coach. I'm pretty sure it just swept right under the rug because I get no response. Fourteen, fourteen to sixteen emails I have sent. I have got only one reply. That was back from a reply that was back last school year. So I just don't get no response. And like I said, I'm tired of my concerns going through the channel because I think a channel takes a U-turn and goes right back to the principal and right under the rug. So now, where do I go? But I'm really set now. Crown Point High School, that's my school. That's my town. I was born there. I was raised there. And I really hope you look into it because I still have kids there. Even though I don't live there anymore, they still call me Mom. I have kids at Thiru High School that call me Mom. And I really take that to heart. So I really hope you look into this matter. And I hate to see these girls, these Thiru Middle School girls, break up because of what they don't want to play with, who they don't want to play for. It was nice to see Gallup McKinley girls go all the way to state. It would have been nice to see these Thiru girls do the same thing. And then one more thing is the bus thing. Last Saturday, two Saturdays ago, we had a track meet with Farmington. Gallup High School pulled up in a nice athletic bus. Here comes our Thiru kids, school bus. Why? I emailed the principal. He said he sent it somewhere else. I emailed that person. We don't know where they go, but our kids deserve it. Just to be treated as famous as the in-school kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groo. We'll continue on now to Charles Long.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Mr. Long. And those in the audience, good afternoon. My name is Charles Long. And I was your county treasurer for 12 years. I'm here also by the recording that I received. I don't know if that's the full length of the recording I heard, but what I heard was very disgusting. And I think that's something that the board and of course, the superintendent needs to look into and address. Don't just sweep it under the rug because that recording talks about you as school board members. Coming from J.D. Reed, I guess, telling the same that you guys are... You guys are gay. I don't know if he meant that you guys were always happy. I don't know. But anyway, you know, I don't think you should let your principals talk about you like that. And Shaiman Chappelli, you know, he brings in principals from other areas that do not know our culture. They do not know what is best for our kids. And as school board members, you're the one that's supposed to address things like that. But I understand that you guys are just bad fellows, I guess. Right now, as a board, you need to do diligence because it's the people that elected you. And if you don't want to represent them, if you don't want to do your job, get out of the way. Make room for other individuals that would really do a good job. I know Mr. Mitchell there, he's good at campaigning. That's all I know. He does. Campaign manager, right? And of course, Titus Az, you know. One thing I've been waiting for this many months is, what happened to the investigation? Why haven't we get a report yet, a written report as to what was investigated, as to what was accomplished with that investigation? It's one thing that I'm very concerned about. We have parents. There's more than the few that are speaking here about the problem at Crown Point High School. And we don't want this to become a big problem. We want this addressed right now, immediately. That's why you need to do diligence as board members. When you were elected, you took an oath and you said you're going to represent children. But that's not happening. Our kids, pretty much, are non-proficient in a lot of areas. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed. I grew up in Crown Point, too. I was born there. And we're all concerned about the school, the way students are being treated. I have a granddaughter that was in school there. She's no longer there. You know why? When she enrolled, she was put in the eleventh grade because that's where her proficiency is. That's the grade where she was supposed to go to. But the school staff there at Crown Point, they brought her back down to eighth grade. I made a report to Paul O'White here, but nothing came out of it. And I think that's the most, I guess, disturbing things that happen. Our complaints, our concerns seem to be just pushed aside. You know, the Gallup McKinley County School District wishes to become a very powerful district where you have a lot of good students graduating, nobody falling through the cracks. The district really needs to look at its operation. How do we improve the proficiency of students? How do we do it? Right now, nothing is happening at our schools. And I assume it's like that everywhere. Because the thing that is wrong with Gallup McKinley County School is you do not teach our kids how to learn. That's the biggest problem I want to tell you. Yeah, you tell them, you know, give them the textbook and say, "This is what you must read. This is what you must study." But you don't teach them how to learn. That's one thing that must be done. So I hope that you will address our concerns from Crown Point. Not only Crown Point, but other schools. Here in town, in the county, all our children deserve the best teachers possible. And, you know, usually, I don't miss words. I get straight to the point. But I want to be kind to the staff today and say, "Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Long. Final speaker this evening is Bobby Martin.
Good afternoon. My name is Bobby Martin. Thank you, board, for listening to us again. You've probably seen my face here many times coming to meetings, school boards. Always with concerns. Every once in a while, you've come with good news. Unfortunately, tonight's not one of those nights. First thing I'd like to talk about is this town hall meeting that we had at Iachy High School back in March 6. We were able to express ourselves, express our concerns. Thank you, Kevin, for hosting that. The other board members that hopefully heard our concerns as well. Mr. Chappelli was there. There were quite a bit of concerns that you seemed interested in. And we made priority to make sure we told people what was going on. You were unaware of certain things, for example, the school buses, not being there for our elementary kids who seem to be, should be a little bit higher priority than our high school kids and middle school kids. That was back on March 6, I think, March 21st. Still have not heard anything back. We only have two months left at school, and our elementary school kids are still being, not paying attention to. It would be nice to hear something back, to hear something's being done, regardless of if it's a phone call, regardless if it was a meeting with the bus instructor or the bus farm supervisor. It would be great to hear something back. I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. We're addressing, we're bringing up all these concerns, but we're not hearing anything. Nothing's being done on it. I don't know if that's all this process is supposed to be. You just come up here, just complain, and then that's it. It just goes in one ear and out the other. But I certainly don't appreciate that as a parent. Next one to bring up is JOM. Our Navajo classes that our students are in. We are in March, again, only two months left at school. And they still haven't had their funding released to them. About Navajo classes that are wanting to do so much, they should have already been able to spend some of that JOM money. But they're handled tight. They're asking us, parents, "Do you guys please go talk to the administration or Central because that's where the money's stuck at?" We have not heard a report on that either. I think we're sticking to it. And you asked about that. You were concerned about it. You said, "We need to do something about it." We keep hearing, we keep hearing, we keep hearing. There's something wrong with what's going on. And as a parent, again, I'm upset because we still haven't heard anything about it. We need to move on it. Next thing is the audit. We had, it was a meeting with JOM, school board, this company that had been building audit sometime back. Again, as a parent, I haven't heard anything back. I don't know if that audit has been dropped. I don't know if it's still continuing forward. But we would like some type of answer. Some kind of information that we can get out to the newspapers, that we can get out to the other parents. Something. Last thing I'd like to bring up, it's even more important than these other topics I brought up. And there's a lot of things going on with this recording from Crown Point that's been heard. I think what I'm going to bring up now is even more important than that. I've had several parents who have come to me because they know I'm such a vocal person. If I speak my mind, if I see something wrong here, something wrong, I'm going to bring it up. But what I want to bring up is my understanding, and it should be investigated ASAP, is that there is a loaded weapon that is being kept in the Crown Point School District in the principal's office. As far as I know, our schools are supposed to be a gun-free zone. Nowhere have I seen any policies that it's okay for administration to have a weapon in school premises, period. I've gone in contact with Navajo police. I'm waiting for official word back from them to see if they can go over there and do an investigation. As far as I know, it's illegal for that weapon to be on school grounds, much less than Navajo Nation. Just hearing the kind of things that this gentleman, the principal, is talking about, it's scary to know that he's got this much racial tension towards our people, towards our school board. And yet, he's being allowed to carry a weapon on school grounds. Who knows what's going to happen? I know if that were the case in any other school district, immediate consequences would happen. I don't understand why that's been allowed to happen here. But of course, I've got a lot more to say, but I'm going to go ahead and end it there for now. But it's like all the other parents are speaking now. Oh yeah, I mean, it's coming down. Let's have them beg you guys to do something from the administrative standpoint. School board members, please, all of you, not just three or four, I mean, all of you, do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Now, we have two more speakers. Again, I had asked earlier that we give you personal, personal information limited. Would that we do have two more speakers? First one would be Eleanor Rogers.
Good afternoon, representative for president or representative for the Gallup McKinley County, Navajo Nation, and also the visitors. Recorder, go ahead. And my name's Eleanor Rogers. My returning client is the Williams client, one for the Water Edge Plan. And the Red House family class are my grandpas, and then the South class are my mother. I'm originally from Crown Point. That's where I reside with my family. And also, I have a daughter that's a senior at Crown Point High School. Reason why I took the mic is because I do have a concern as a mother. And also, concern. So here's for the concern, for the concern. I guess it's going to start with a video recording thing that was texted me from a colleague of mine. And I'm like, "What's this?" And I told my husband, I said, "Hey, guess what?" He goes, "Uh-huh. Watching TV right now." So, "Okay, listen to this." He goes, "Who is that?" I said, "That's Dr. Reed, our principal at the high school." I said, "That can't be." Well, now you know that's him. He's calling. That's his voice. And I'm like, "Shall we tell my, shall we tell our daughter?" He goes, "No, she won't be able to hear it." And I let her hear the message or whatever to get her... She's trying to focus on her prom at the moment. Come April, they have a big prom coming up. And we, as parents, we spend a lot of money on prom dresses. We spent $500 on a million dollar prom dress for her from this Friday on the way around town. And we're already looking at big expects for her senior graduation. And I think that Crown Point High School should get them back together, not only just the principal, everybody there, including the janitors, including us parents. I don't really know what to pinpoint, but I really, I'm willing to help somehow to go back into this hajjam community way. Maybe it's possible. Maybe we can do that as families. That's all I'm asking, being here. And I think that Dr. Reed does need help. Maybe he needs to sit up. And you guys that have been talked about, being put down at the Gallup McKinley County Board members, put somebody in there immediately, tentatively. I mean, like, emergency. I want a principal at the Red House. They're on this big break. We want a different principal that we can work with, that can cooperate with us. They can appreciate who we are as parents, students, and visitors, and community members. That's what we want for our community. Put somebody there that's willing to move forward and in the contract with Crown Point High School. That can move our students forward into the right, the right path, hajjam path. Not this unknown direction. I don't want that. I want our high school graduation to do well, to go well. And I want to make it look nice and fancy. I want to make it last. I just don't want to walk in the very, sit down, and the graduation is over. I don't want that because our kids worked so hard for 12 years to get to where you want to be. Now, let's get them out the door, take them to the right hajjam way. And, you know, that way, they'll remember that they went to school at Crown Point High School. Two weeks ago, I went to the school principal. I'm very direct, and I told the principal. I met with him. I went to his office. I was carrying this. "Okay." Okay, I introduced myself, and I talked about the prom and the graduation. Because, I went there simply because we kind of don't even know what's going on. Seriously, board members, we're still hearing it from Eleanor Rogers. We don't know what's going on with the prom. We don't know what's going on with the graduation, period. We have no update. We have no meetings, none of it. And they're like, "They say we have two months down the road, and we're figuring it out." We're doing, but we can't delay doing. And also, I want you to appoint some board members, some members to a committee, to form a committee for us. I don't want you to come here and hear my English language. But I wish I could write it in black and white, but I'm hoping that you write it in black and white also. I think that, and also, next week, I'm going... I think that, and also next week, I'm going to Navajo Nation president's office. I'm going to share this with them also. I think Friday, I have an appointment with them. But you know what? It's an ill feeling if you're going to share this kind of message to especially a leader. And it's not going to look good on us, Asian Agency. Come on, guys, get the ball right, dribble it right, and, you know, get back on the right path for us before it's too late. Before it really gets out there and gets really dirty. If it does get out there, it's going to really do good on us at all. That includes all of you guys in the city, in this room, and whoever they can hear for. When I went to see Dr. Reed, I asked him about the prom, the graduation. And then the third question was, "Dr. Reed, what's this that I'm hearing about the gun, the principal with the gun?" He looks at me like he doesn't know what's going on. He doesn't know what I'm talking about. Well, I said, and then he went on. He said, "Well, there's no gun," and whatever. And I said, "What do you know about this?" My husband's police officer. And we didn't hear anything on the scanner, but that doesn't mean that anything happened. Because a lot of times, we just don't stay by the scanner 24/7 to see what's going on. A lot of times, we do our own little thing as a family too. So we're families, and we're all families, like I said. Let's get back to your right path with Hason and get some help. And, you know, we can still all listen to that, but for me, I feel like, I feel awful standing here. It's not right. And it's really not right for our students. It's really not going to be right for them if they go out the door like this. What happened to Crown Point High School? Crown Point High School, we had awesome, tremendous coaches, awesome principal before. It was like a 2A, 3A school that I've noticed over there. They had trophies in their leader, but now that I'm hearing a lot that these students have like changing schedules. And I'm trying to keep my cool. I don't want them to start picking on my daughter retaliation. But you know what? If that happens, I'll stand in back and, you know, I have two or three attorneys already. But I don't want to use that. Like I said, get it done right. Add on this before it gets dirty. I don't want that. Let's not do it. Let's not go that way, please. I'm asking you kindly in a nice way, whatever was said, forget it. Give this individual along himself and say, "We're not going to put you back in Crown Point High School, but you're going to sit up, but get somebody else out there that will not call names, that will respect us women, that will respect the Moris, that will respect the community, that will respect the shooting. Say more internationally. Who we are is Navajo. There's no pride, and this is our nation. By all means, give us, open it up with glad allegiance, and we are one nation under God." And I'm hoping that you writing all this down as, as members, school board members, president. I know some of you, and I met with you in the center office before, for some of the concerns in the past. But I didn't think I was going to step back in. Maybe it's time you go write again next, next term. Maybe it's time somebody come in, like me. I'm educated. I have my masters. I'm ready. Maybe put me in as a principal. I'm ready. We educators, we come back to the Navajo Nation. We want to come back and help. But a lot of toughs were overlooked. Us Native professions were overlooked. We got too much education, not enough experience. We talk a lot, but we want to show it also. So please do, get somebody out there. I don't want the same person in there after spring break. Get somebody, maybe, that's willing to work with us. And train those staff, put them through training that they needed, you know, monitor the classes. A lot of teachers are just sitting in the classroom. A lot of teachers are just taking those students around the teachers, us teaching for them in the classroom. That's what's going on in Crown Point. Just give you a heads up of that. There's a lot of things that are misinterpreted within the school. I don't think it's only Crown Point. There are probably other districts. I mean, maybe they get back in there and I don't think we should move on with the same principle and, you know. We need to, I don't really want to, I feel uncomfortable. How would you feel if, you know, forever I was burnt and somebody was giving it to you black and, you know, want to eat it? I feel that way. I feel discriminating. That's not right. Let me use that as an analogy, but this is, this is how horror is gone. If you don't, guys, board members, if you don't put your foot down, then it's going to really get out there and get dirty. How would you guys, how do you feel now? Being called gay? How does, how do you feel that if you take a woman out and the three men, the men are there, they're gay? How do you feel about that? I would ready to do something to that guy, but no. Take care of it. Don't put it back over there. We want a different principal that we can work with, different administrators that can appreciate who we are. That can, that can make sure who you are as school board members in the, from the Galloway County and also to the state level. I think that that way we will really get the Hason and graduate the students, the senior, move along. I really don't feel comfortable at all about. I didn't even sleep last night because of this too. It's, it's disgusting. How, how can, how can that person that was recording, how can, how can you, how come she did not stop and say, "Hey, don't say this. Stop what you're doing. You can't talk anymore. You don't talk like this." At the college, in the college, and then professing, professing, and profession in the high school, in the Galloway County, you don't talk like that. You don't use those language. Don't you need them? That's what my grandma, my grandpa said. You don't talk like that. Don't you need them? Because it's your own body. It's going to come back and reflect you on these days. It's okay. Look at yourself in the mirror. You're talking, you're cussing yourself in the mirror. It's going to come back at you as an image. So I hope, please, that my message got out there with flying colors. I know my Creator, my God, you heard me, so please help our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rogers, last one. You have shared more. Again, if we can refrain this down to five minutes or less, we appreciate that.
I have a relationship with a patient. She might have any incidents. I don't know if y'all know her. She was a veteran. I've seen her for over 30 years. I also have a good. We just lost my dad last week, so having to get hit with this recording and a lot of annihilation of racism and discrimination is not called for. I would actually like something to do then immediately. Sincerely, I would ask you, you guys. Our children should be our first priority. Name calling should be stopped. We're supposed to be progressing forward, not backwards. I really don't know what racism is, but I'll tell you what I mean. My son is a junior this year. Back in 1985, Michael's old chick barrel shot the superintendent. We all know that. We still had graduation. We still had to try and jump forward. We've been almost 30 years in. I learned to come across this again, and my son is a junior. What am I going to do? What am I going to tell him? Well, I'll tell you one thing. I told my son this morning. He was pretty upset. He said, "Does anybody understand? We tried telling you all, family service, and we'll actually hear them now." And so when I move forward, I do something about it. I'm going to make my voice heard. So that's one of the reasons why I'm here. You all need to do something. It's very important. Black, white, brown, colored, that doesn't matter. Our kids should be taught across the board evenly. No one should be higher. No one should be lower. Guns, I don't know how many of you know, but we already had a lot of gun problems because of guns. What if that pistol used it on one of our children? What if it's been, what if it's going to be used on someone else? I've already been through it. That is the address. You, as a board member, we elected you into these positions. You came up to our communities and asked for our vote. We actually honored you to be elected into these chairs. Each chair, you guys are here for our children. We rely on you. We need our voices to be heard. With that said, I just want to tell you all, I hope you guys do something about it soon. Before Monday. So please, I ask you again, that you all, sorry I'm late, I don't know who you all are, but please, that's all we're asking, please. I'm not here yelling. I'm not here making them expect it though. I'm here asking these. Our kids, we have drugs in the school. None of that's being said. Our kids should be selling drugs to each other. Please, if I have to go in and videotape, which is probably not right, but it's not good. So as our board members, gather your thoughts, vote on it, and please put someone else in there that is going to understand us and is willing to work with the community. Is this stands now? We're already bumping heads. We're going to be in a light, we're sort of looking at Ferguson and St. Louis, like kids live out there. Look at New York. Look at what happened. Look at all the Trump rallies, black and white, that shouldn't count. We all should, the responsibility is, I can't, you should know that.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. With that, I have my little statement here that I would like to present to our parents here this evening, as well as our board members, as well as our administrators, superintendent. As this issue had became public in the last couple of days, I took the time to think of all of our children, and our communities, and our district. This issue became very personal when our board members were discriminated. Discriminated with hate, bigotry, homophobic oppression, and personal attacks. My heart immediately sank, and my mind lost. How can we have administrators working in capacity with hateful conversations being held behind closed doors? It is individuals like these that hold us back from progress, civil rights of short quality, and living in a civilized society. Obviously, this type of behavior comes from politics and national scale. It must stop. I grew up in a society where my elders taught respect. We were disciplined when we spoke of such negativity. I consulted some of my elders and had asked, "How can we respond to this kind of message, especially from a school administrator?" I do not support the message, nor does this board, nor has the, no one has the right to judge us or our citizens in our district. We must remind ourselves that we are a civilized district, and we treat one another equal. The color of my skin does not make me better than anyone in this room. The duty entrusted to me by this board does not make me higher than anyone. The sacred journey of my leadership, my campus heroes as a traditional practitioner, as a medicine man, and to maintain support of each student, this district should not be shunned due to the hateful, negative words of a select few. This will end today. I'm sorry to each and every person who has been greatly affected by this comment made. We must move on. We must heal as a board, as a district, and as a society. And we must not let hateful oppression get the best of us. In closing, as I always have said, my elders always tell me that moving on is something better than dreading the past, as it turns in English. And let's make our pre-education, and let's stop the separation as we always have in the past, where we always compare Navajo versus white. Stop the discrimination, stop the hatred. We must move on, and we must be moving on as one district, as Galloway County Schools. And we must always prioritize our children in our district. And just to let you know that we did take action. Our superintendent did, is currently working on this school. And the principal will not be returning to the school. So that's one of the first things we did. And in light of this, I will be working to make sure none of this ever happens again. And hopefully, it never happens again as a part of our district. So I just wanted to make that clear this evening. And as one of the things, superintendent, we're getting onto this as quickly as we can since they got this, this sound clip last week, Friday. I would ahead and forward to make sure this is something we, we don't want as a district, and we don't support as a whole. And I just want to remind everybody, if you want to, that we're one district, and we're one voice. There's no separation. As long as I'm here, as long as I'm president, I'm going to make sure that we all are this one, as one district. We're all here for our children. That's what we're here for. And I wanted to say that this evening, and I hope you continue on to our agenda. Ms. Madi.
I did want to make a comment on this. I have a statement. I say, I personally don't share. I thought, I thought, I should, I should change. I'm going to change my mind. I'm going to change my mind. It's frustrating, it's appalling, and it's disgusting. I do have, as a person mentioned, a Facebook page. I'm very honest on there. I express who I am, what I believe in, and how I feel at times, and what we do as a family. So this is what I posted. Dear friends, families, community members, I'm appalled by the discriminating comments made on the recording that have been shared on the internet. As a board member, we entrust, we entrust our leaders to do what's right for our, our children. I can show compassion, trustworthy respect, and responsibility. Very caring and sensitive, Mr.. I'm very glad that this has been taken care of by our, our president and the superintendent. I think that we need to continue, as what Mr. Ness said, to move forward. So thank you very much for your comments, and I know that we'll continue to do what's right for our children. We have to keep our children first. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, thank you, Ms. Madi. With that, we have to move to our agenda here. The first part, the second part, the third part of the agenda, I'm sorry, is their two hundred minutes for March 7, 2016, board members. Do we have any corrections or changes on the four minutes for March 7?
If you may.
Ms. Durney.
Yes. Right before J, the March 7 meeting, is when you left for an emergency at the hospital. It does not state that you left the meeting. And then we noted it. Because all of a sudden, we went from four board members to three board members. With that correction, I move that the correction be approved and motion be approved as corrected.
Motion by Ms. Madi to make that correction. The board members for March 7, right after on page 10 of this conference where this is excellent, asking skills to the point of other human, skilled with the hospital, that will change by Ms. Madi and motion to approve the minutes. Roll call this.
...door decorating contest, as well as a pretty good concert. If your children go to school there, I'm sure they can tell you about it. A band came in and just rocked their lunch one day. So, there's things happening at my room. Swamp the Musical at Davidson Elementary. These students put on a musical there. And there are some of our swamp stars. They also had a drive-in movie and car show, where the kids and the parents worked together to make cars, to be able to sit there and eat popcorn and drink lemonade, I believe it was, and watch a movie. Waybill, I spoke with him about this. He thought that this was probably one of the most successful events he had ever had in his school. There were some really Superman, Batman cars. The one on the bottom left, the lights even worked. It was really a lot of fun. So, that's what's happening at Davidson. Cronkite Mid had a literacy day. The children were lined up all the way around the gym to be able to receive their awards. It was quite an interesting event. Thru Elementary hosted their student of the month award. Here we have a pretty proud student sitting with his parents. And training over at SSC included educational assistant training. This is Ramon Minding. And we know that there's a lot of things going on throughout the district. So, we invite you to contact us, lead the journey. You can get some information about what's going on. On April 2nd, we have the Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Central Office is hosting that event. We're looking for about thirty booths to be there to help celebrate child abuse prevention. There's a walk. There's a lot of things happening. So, we invite you to share your pictures from your phone. We invite you to call in and let us know when things are happening and we'll try to get it covered. Tomorrow evening, by Olohaski, will be recognized by Mayor Jackie McKenna in the city council meeting for her Golden Apple Award. So, that's it in a nutshell. Thank you. The city council meeting is at 6:00 P.M. So, that will be the future story and the journey. And it starts at ten thirty at the CYM office, I believe, or ten o'clock. And then they'll walk down Aztec and go down Portland to Central Office. And then that's when the activities will start. Thank you.
Okay, and now it's your own business. Seven eight, improve over one-time payment qualifying government council contract employees for attention and end them. This is Max Rader. We'll go ahead and start down with Mr. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Nance. I really don't need this. I use my teaching voice. I have a lot of emails to me from teachers concerning this item. Realizing that they take out of their pockets to supplement their classrooms. This is the one way that we can give back to those teachers as a bonus. As you see in your summary, the distribution is two hundred and thirty-nine employees for the Q percent. And those are for one-year employees. Look at the number of employees that's been here for more than that. One thousand four hundred and eighty-five employees. Let's bring that two hundred and thirty-nine back over there. We'll have over seventeen hundred returning teachers to the Alkin County Schools. With this, I call it a bonus. It's a one-time bonus. How many teachers do we have near the audience? How many, how, do you agree with me that this is done, meaning? As a former teacher myself, I got one bonus myself. And I'm shocked. It was a nine hundred dollar bonus. It was about nineteen eighty-five. I paid my dad the money that I borrowed for my mortgage for my house. So, he's pleased to have that too. Some of you have loans that need to be paid, student loans. Yes? So, this will help you. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I also received about a dozen emails, a couple of phone calls. Come back to that in a minute. One of the things I think, I'm assuming, is that most or all of us think that this would be good use for the funds that have become available. The point made in the emails often was not only about the number of hours that the person put in as a teacher. I really appreciated a few of the emails where the person emphasized what they were seeing in their colleagues, other members of their staff, being at schools, extra hours, and so on. The question in my mind from the last meeting was not whether this is a good idea, but is it the only idea that we should consider? Two point eight million, to me, is not pocket change. I wish I had a little bit of that. And by the scale of the economy, you know, two point eight million is a lot of money. And that means that there are a lot of things that might be able to, that we might be able to do with it. And I wanted to think about what those options were. Some of the people have responded to our tabling of this item last time as if we just didn't get it because it's just obvious this is what we should do. Well, I worked ten, eleven hours all the time I taught and was an administrator. That was just normal. But I do believe that our people work hard. But I have a couple of things I want to share. It's gonna take a few minutes. But I want you to know, I'm trying to think this through. Because one of the things I look at, I say, we've got these teachers, who I do believe are putting in low hours, working hard, caring about kids, spending their own money sometimes on classroom supplies. And yet our school grades aren't what they should be. So, is there something we could use this money for that would help the effectiveness of our education and help the effectiveness of these teachers and staff that are working hard? And so, here are the kinds of ideas that go through my head. And I'm not proposing these. I'm just letting you know the thought process that I've been going through these last couple of weeks. What could we do to support and strengthen the work of these teachers and these staff members that are working hard? What about, as was mentioned in one, I only had one email from a staff member who actually suggested some things besides just giving the bonus. And field trips was one of the things that was mentioned, more money for field trips. But I have some, here's some other ideas. What about, since our math scores need to be boosted, what about math labs? Money for math labs and math specialists, just like reading specialists. Not so many school have math specialists in the territory. What about, do we need to add more positions or extended pay for people who are conducting the testing, all the testing we do? What about the need for facilities improvement? We've heard mentioned in different times in the past about need for better lighting, even outside for safety in parking lots and so on. What about student academic clubs and sponsors for that? Those are just one, you know, list of ideas. Another thing is that, since I have been trying to propose, getting there very fast, that we consider policy to integrate Navajo Indian studies more fully into the curriculum. In a lot of, not, I won't say a lot, yeah, a fair number of schools. In our territory, reservation public schools have hogons, hogon classrooms, as appropriate kind of classroom design for doing Navajo culture teaching. While this one, we could build, you know, thirty-five hogons, fifty-six thousand dollars each. That's pretty well equipped hogons, electricity, running water, and everything else. And that would come to less than this, this amount. What about a total museum, archive, repository, library, where we accumulated all of the main available print materials, video materials, and so on on Navajo and Indian culture? And the curriculum materials that have been produced by different districts over the last decades and get those all available? The district has some, but we don't have everything. What about teaching artifacts, thinking right now, just for now in terms of? The artifacts that not only can teach about, but have teachings associated with them, their mechanisms for teaching things beyond themselves, cradle board, grinding stone, moccasins, stick-dice game, sedes, baskets, clothing, bibu, keshchik, pentsai. These kinds of things all have meanings with them. Different earth materials, turquoise, obsidian, coral, shell, salt, chi, chi, right there. These kinds of things, plants. We can have all of those things as resources and resource persons. And if we go beyond Navajo to other Indian connections that are in our territory, and then we look at the rest of the interesting and meaningful heritages in our community, because things have been lost, you know, the school has, the school has colonized, in a sense, a lot of us. The Croatian community in Gallup has pretty much lost its music. There used to be Croatians musicians in Gallup more than there are now. The traditional dances that get done once a year, but they have to bring in outside musicians, outside instrumentalists along for their picnic of agathe. So, there are other things that are part of identity of all of us, various ones. And so, we could have resources for local histories and cultures of all kinds that are represented in our community. And then, we have talked as a board on increasing parent involvement. What about setting up parent involvement group, parent centers? Where we have material, resource materials for the parents? Hold on, I'm not proposing any of those at this point. What I'm saying is, when you get two point eight million dollars, there should be a lot of things we could do that, that have impact, okay? Now, I'm not trying to talk out both sides of my mouth, but I'm trying to respond to those who thought that we had no business tabling this last time because some of us were raising questions and about how the money can be used, what's proper use, and so on. So, I just want to mention those to indulge me there and mention that there are other possibilities. We've talked about trying to revitalize Navajo language. I brought that up there for months, ever since I got on the board. Two point eight million dollars could have some impact. Now, talk about on the other side of my mouth. Who is more important than a teacher in the educational process? Maybe one or two people, called parents. But in the school itself, there's nobody more important than the teachers, right? There are, the rest of the people all are supportive of that so that the learning process happens effectively. You can't have a nice school without the custodian. Look at this new place, and it's clean, and it's pleasant, and hopefully gets light to come here. All those support things, facilities, custodians, that bus drivers sometimes have huge impact on kids. They know the kids, they know the families in their territory a lot of times. So, all of those employees, and I would say especially the teachers, are vital. So, I'm going to state my support for the proposal that this money be used as a one-time payment, addendum, to the invoice as presented. But I want you to know, I'm not doing it blindly because I wish they had nothing to point at for all those other things that I've mentioned. Because they are also important. And how do you put pit one against the other? But I do understand that our staff has not had a raise, some of them for years, when normally on a salary schedule, they would have that raise. And if it will, and bigger rate, right? But I would, I would also put that challenge out there to the people who emailed me. You were in favor of the bonus for yourself, but what else could we do for kids with that money? And let's keep that in mind as we go forward. We must have more ways that we can identify that will help strengthen the education of our kids. One footnote, just gonna sneak this in here. There are different ways we send messages to kids and to parents and to ourselves about what's important. And when we talk about the identity of Navajo Indian kids, especially as the majority of our students, there are many ways we can signal our appreciation for their heritage, the knowledge of their parents and grandparents and great-grandparents by putting things in the curriculum. But it was just pointed out to me, very, very, very recently, as it's honored that Navajo sovereignty has been in the calendar for some time. But this is the first time this year that it's going to actually be observed as a real holiday, where we're not having school on that day. And I think that was done between the superintendent and the union in negotiating that detail. And I think it's a way of saying, again, that not just the day is important, but there's a concept and a history here that we need to start understanding and paying attention to, and in this case commemorating. Thank you.
P.S., that means I have an agenda I'd add to that. Thank you, Mr. Hideman, for supporting me. For those in the audience, these funds that came available were from Impact Aid that was held back for how many years, it takes?
From two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fourteen.
From two thousand and eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. They were held back out of operational funds. Yes, the state took part of that money from us. But the two point eight was our operational funds for our teachers. So, thank you very much for understanding. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Again, I would like to say and comment on this, that this is something that I kind of did a lot of research on from the last time we met. And we did get the emails, and we did get some comments about having it straight across the board, that being fair, and, you know, other comments to that effect. I did talk with a principal that did call me. And of course, she says that, you know, of course, as being individuals, you know, the greed or the, you know, that kind of thing, so where you do want that money for yourself. But she goes, you have to step back and think of the children when you're in education. You think back, and she said she thought about it. It's unfortunate that as a board, as parents, as community members, that we weren't brought into this decision, this discussion with the union and the superintendent that where this arrangement was made. I think we, as people that are brought to, and elected by you guys to watch over the budget, that we should have a say in this discussion. We were not brought into this discussion. That's my first point. Because we can see, I visited Cronkite. I went to Cronkite High School. And there's a need there. Not that I don't support you teachers. My mom's a teacher, my sister's a teacher. I was a paraprofessional and a coach. I, my best friends are teachers. But, but when you step back and look at what Cronkite has to go through, their bleachers are unsafe. There's no rails for them to walk up on, for our elders to enjoy the basketball games. The tables, there's no covering like this, it's all torn in half. You heard the parents say there's no computers. I wish we were brought into this conversation with our parents and principals to be represented, to say, we need a need. Maybe part of that money could have been spent over there to help our children get all textbooks. We have heard as board members, not all our kids have textbooks. Is that true? There is a need. And I was very concerned about that. If this is Impact Aid, I researched Impact Aid and on the Indian Education Committee that I sent on for years. We were the committee that helped generate the PPI to where we looked at that and made that agreement and how these monies would be spent. We're supposed to be using these monies for student achievement, to make the growth in student achievement. And I understand, and I know what you guys are going through, by not having the resources or the raises that you do deserve. But just like what Len is saying, Mr. Hideman is saying, we gotta look at the whole picture too. And we gotta make sure that this is the fair way and that we are not gonna be penalized with this. Because if something happens and we are told that we're using the Impact Aid incorrectly, because I know in the Impact Aid, yes, we can use eighty, most schools use eighty percent for this kind of stuff, for employee salary. But it can also be used within the three to, three to five years span on after-school programs, career readiness, and welding, automotive, culinary arts. I pulled up the Impact Aid right here. And it clearly states, we're supposed to consult and involve the tribal councils, the Indian parents, in the planning and development of the educational programs and activities supported by the, by the Impact Aid funds. Has that been done? Did you guys get an agreement? Did you guys report this to Navajo Nation, to the Zuni tribes, that these monies are gonna be spent in this way, these federal funds? We need those answers, those questions to be, to be clarified. Because if we just distribute this money, how about if they tell us, you guys are spending this right, all employees that received it have to pay that back? Is that an option? Is that something that we can get in trouble for? I want our, our staff to have everything, the T's crossed and the I's dotted, so they don't have to pay these monies back before violating anything or any kind of odd violations. But that's one, because it, it falls back on us as board members because we're the financial, we're responsible for these funds, and I'm concerned about that. These, these funds, like I said, I'm sorry, but I, I have to do this research. We all know with the gas prices as well, it looks wonderful, that we can fill up our gas and get fifteen dollars worth of gas right now. But it's gonna hurt us next year because these funds come from the revenues of those. And I, I mentioned that before, and I do support this, but I want, I want it in writing, I want it in a minutes of the response to my questions that I'm giving to administration. I want them to tell us that. My first one, since these are compact, our Impact Aid monies, has a tribe, the tribes around us been notified? That's, that's one I want clarification on. And are we violating any New Mexico state constitution of anti-banking donation clause? And will our, our staff, their getting these, their contracted staff, be any way be told to pay this money back if we are in any kind of violation? I want, I want those minutes, and I want that documented, the, the, the response from the administration, please, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I have some concerns as well. You know, I would really love to see our teachers get this retention. And as you notice, it'll keep referring to it as a bonus. It is not a bonus, it's a retention. I have questions on, you know, we, we, we say that we are excluding the superintendent on this, you know, these percentages, two percent, four percent. You know, I really feel that these percentages are unfair because at a four percent, I'm not too sure if, if these, if the retention will be going to our assistant superintendent as well, along with our shepherd, our, you know, because at a percentage, you know, it's gonna be very unfair for them to receive such a higher retention than somebody who is making much less than they are. You know, if we're gonna do a retention, it needs to be straight across the board, a dollar amount to everybody, the same amount, and not some receiving higher and some receiving lower. Because the people that are gonna, are gonna be hurting on this point will be the ones who don't make as much as our assistant superintendents, or as much as our financial manager, our shepherds. The people who actually work hard in their classrooms will not be receiving as much as they do. I find that unfair. I don't know when, you know, we're saying we got, I guess, a payback from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and fourteen from Impact Aid, I don't know when this came in, but for reading the government dependent, you know, it was, the money was set aside for savings. And now they're finding that we're gonna be okay, so they want to use the money. As a board, I don't, everything, we were notified that there was a savings. We were never notified that this two point eight million, two point nine million even came in. And those are the things that we should be aware of. Those are the first things, they should contact us the board, letting them know our budget, letting them know that we have this money available. Instead, we're making, we're putting out this money, you know, it was, I guess I could say in secret, because we didn't know about after the fact and what they wanted and what was going to be done with this. So, you know, as far as proper manner, I really feel that, you know, this really needs to be revisited. I do believe that our teachers do need a retention if this money is able to be given. You know, it's kind of scary, you know, having this much money and us not knowing about it. You know, it just kind of makes me wonder what else to hit in and what else to come up with in later times as far as well. We had it in savings, or we had it put away, and surprised, where it is now, you know. So, that's my discussion, and I will decide on my vote, I guess, when I update them.
Thank you, board members, for making this conference there. I believe there's questions that go regarding some of the comments that the board made. The board wanted a response back on those questions. I'll go as a respondent.
President Nance, members of the board, Superintendent Chappetti, members of the audience. When it comes to Impact Aid, there are actually four different types of Impact Aid that the district receives. Impact Aid is generated as a pilt or payment in lieu of taxes. Because the district has so much land that is non-taxable, there is Impact Aid that's received because we're not able to collect taxes on that land. So, what the district actually receives is property taxes from taxable land, and that's generated into the operational fund. And then there are also the, the Impact Aid funds that go into the general fund. As I mentioned, there are actually four different types of Impact Aid. One is one that goes directly into operational, and the state actually takes seventy-five percent credit for these funds. So, when we receive our state equalization guarantee, what the state actually does is they compute what's called a program cost. And then they look at any Impact Aid we've received in operational, and the state takes credit for seventy-five percent of that money. So, a good portion of the money that we receive, the state actually takes credit for that. Now, they also take credit for the funds that we receive for property. Now, they also take credit for the funds that we receive for property taxes as well. Both of those funds are treated identically. There is a small percentage, that twenty-five percent, that we're actually able to keep in operational, in general funds for general use. There is also Fund 25147, it's also referred to as Title A. These are also general funds. There was a letter that was issued by the Department of Education in 2009 that specifically stated that these funds are not to be treated as federal funds. They cannot have to comply with the federal O M B circulars, and they can't be used as general funds. There is also special education funds that we receive, and this is often referred to as Title A in special education. These funds are federal funds. These funds must be used on special education students, they cannot be used for any other purpose, and they do comply with the O M B circulars. The last type of funds that we receive is construction-related fund. That construction-related fund is a competitive request, because we receive Impact Aid funds, we can competitively request to receive these construction funds. Those again are federal funds and are covered by the O M B circulars. So, out of those four types, we're asking for some funding out of one type, which is the Impact Aid final payments that we received from 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014. I have mentioned in several presentations that these funds were being withheld at the federal level. There was a case out of Washington State where a school district had stated that they should have been treated as a heavily impacted district. Until that matter was adjudicated, they held everyone's Impact Aid funding, and we have no idea when those funds were going to be dispersed. Since that case has been adjudicated, the funds have just been released one right after another, and in correlation with the remaining appropriations that were available. In total, what we were able to keep is about two-point-two million dollars of that Impact Aid. The state's going to take their seventy-five percent, so that number, that two-point-two is excluding the seventy-five percent the state is taking. In addition to that, the district has been working very hard on our grants management, and one of the things that we've been able to do is reduce the amount of temporary cash transfers that we have had to take out of the operational funds and keep set aside, because we have to pay upfront for federal funds that are used. So, we've had to keep these operational funds set aside. We've worked very hard to try to get that reimbursement process sped up as much as possible. We've worked with the state, we've worked with the federal government, we've worked with other private branch boards that have given us funding, and we have been able to reduce the amount of temporary cash transfers that we've had outstanding. So, it is kind of a multitude of things that have combined. I know I wasn't able to present fully some of the audit information, some of the revenue information is in the audit report that the board members received. I know that the board didn't feel strongly, I guess, about that report at the time, so I was not able to fully present that report at that board meeting. So, part of that is kind of in connection with that. So, I hope that that can answer some of the questions regarding where the funds are coming from and how they were distributed to the district. In regards to notifying our governmental counterparts in the Navajo Nation and the Zuni Nation, I don't believe that that's occurred, but as these are general operation funds, that's not typically an item that is done with those general use funds. The other thing I believe was regarding employees paying something back. If the district is doing something in error, the employees are not going to be individuals
I'm sorry, did I address all the questions? So, this Impact Aid does not, we don't associate this section of the Impact Aid as underscored, so this one does not do with the, or correlate with the IPP?
Well, I think that the Indian policies that we have in place correlates with all of the funding that we have, you know, I think our goal is always to be moving towards that for all of our students.
And I think it just, since it is Impact Aid, I just feel that a conversation should be made, just so we're not, we're being respectful. And I would really ask that of you, Mike Paletta, and Mr. Chappetti, to include us in these conversations. Because without us knowing, that's why we have so much questions, that we could have been informed when we sat together, and we could have said, "Oh, okay, we realize now that there's four Impact Aid, and we're using this one out of this." Instead of us kind of being frivolous and, you know, of course the way is projected, we don't support it, but we do, but we're not included in that conversation.
And I can't particularly speak to that. I know that I've told the board on several times, you know, I definitely adhere to the chain of command, and I push information up through the chain of command as requested. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Hideman this week, he did take the time to come and speak with me and get some additional information from me. And I've always stated that if questions are asked, I will definitely be happy to answer them. But it's kind of, I don't know what you don't know. And if I don't get those questions, I'm not able to provide, I kind of provide general presentations, because topics can be immense in the amount of information that's actually provided, depending on what you want to know. And I may give you a thirty-minute presentation on things that you don't want to know about, but there is one thing that you do want to know. So, if that information is given to those superintendent Chappetti, if he flows down to me, so that I can research it and definitely give you an answer, that can be done, and we definitely welcome that from our board members.
Could you let us know, first, when you're coming, when you're aware that we had this money?
So, it's actually, the last payment came in last week. It's actually been coming in very slowly, and that was not part of my initial calculation, that very last payment, because I wasn't anticipating receiving it. I was including that deduction from the temporary cash transfers.
But I apply that from two-point-eight to two-point-nine?
So, the two-point-nine, and I did kind of put on there an asterisk, that because we hadn't approved it at the time I had my initial calculations, I just wanted to be sure that if it is approved this evening, I'm able to fit in every single person that deserves it, and should they go over that a little plus two-point-eight that I had put on there? And that's why it just says up to two-point-nine. It will definitely only go to individuals who qualify at the percentage as stated. If it's less than the dollar amount that's there, no additional funds will be distributed, it will be distributed at the percentage stated. But I know that Priscilla said specifically, "Don't tell us we're going to do X, and then have to pull back into Y, or not, we're going to do X."
So, like that percentage, our employees who are maybe fifteen, ninety thousand plus are going to get a whole lot more retention than a teacher, a senior who's making fifteen to eighteen. Is that the way?
It will be on a percentage basis, so it will be based upon their revenues.
Yeah, that's why I really feel that it's unfair.
How about the other, last year, end of the year, or end of the year, also, there was two times we gave housing, free housing, and this has been a big concern, because I've got a lot of comments on this one too. We give free housing for new people that come in, plus a bonus for getting a new job, for getting employed by the district. So, they're already getting some kind of incentive. And then, at the end of the year, we gave, there was another incentive that was given to schools that made growth, and they were given another bonus. And I don't know if that was, I don't want to say all the U B A schools or principals, but there was some kind of bonus that was given again. So, I don't, I'm kind of with Kevin, I would rather see, because we're giving people bonuses, and like he said, all the superintendent, assistant superintendents, and the shepherds are going to get huge bonuses, and then the other, it should be straight, eventually given bonuses, we should treat all our employees, because they were extra hard, the same way, a two-thousand-dollar, two-thousand-five-hundred-dollar bonus to everybody, and that's not fair that these guys already got a bonus, and our hard-working people that have been here for years, twenty-five, thirty years, are not even getting any kind of bonus. But yet, we're kind of giving extra free housing and bonuses to these people, and then the ones that make growth get another, so they're getting three bonuses in one year.
So, to address that just a little bit, that is why there's a differential between employees who have been here more than two years, or the two years or more, and those that are just here the current year, that's why there's a two percent and a four percent. That is part of the differential that was anticipated, because we gave those initial bonuses. Now, the other that I can definitely address is that we do offer longevity addenda for any employee, depending on their class. It could be twenty years, it could be twenty-five years, but there is a longevity addenda that's paid to every person who is here beyond those certain number of years. And then, especially with the teacher housing, well, hold on, the third one, the actual state funding that came in for the growth percentages, that's below the line funding. The district has to apply for that money, so we don't have as much freedom in being able to distribute that equally as we could. Again, you know, we have specific initiatives where we targeted some things, so... Got it. So, and then definitely on the teachered housing, it's definitely important as part of our recruitment efforts, I don't know if Mr. Hyatt feels free to let me speak on this, but we definitely want to encourage people to come here. As was previously stated, we do our very best to get the most educated, dedicated people in our district that want to stay here and teach our students. We are trying very hard. Everybody knows that there's teacher shortages all over the country. We want to attract quality people to our district to ensure that our students have a qualified teacher in the classroom. So, we are doing our very best to get those people here. The other issue with that is, is just making sure that those teacherage units are full, so we can give somebody an incentive to convince the teacherage units and stay in our teacherage units, we definitely want to do that. We want them in that community.
I think there are two levels, in a way, to this decision and our reaction to it, thinking back to last week. I agree that I also felt like we didn't get a heads-up to consider, we weren't presented with the number of options that administration was considering. We were given one option that affected all the employees, and I think it put us on the spot, sort of unfairly, instead of conferring with this. And I think, so we've got the nuts and bolts of the thing, but we also have another general thing here, that we're still trying to overcome as a board in terms of transparency and communication and being ahead of the curve mutually. So, for example, there are other schools, I mean, this is, triggers this, there are other school districts in the state who are working on their budgets already, and we're going to get ours, and it's going to be, there's only so much time, you've got to do it. We don't have time to consider options. It has that same, I have that same concern. Contracts are being let, but we're not told that officially, we're hearing that through the grapevine, and contracts have gone out, and now, and we don't even have a superintendent's report on the agenda. So, we're not getting information ahead of the curve. So, somehow, we have, there's a general thing here, that this is just, is one case or triggers that. I think we want to, we want to understand, we want to be fully informed in our decision-making, and we want information as much as possible ahead of time. And I know what you're saying, I understand, actually, you don't always know what we need to know, because we haven't asked or indicated that, and we don't know what to ask, because we don't know what's coming up. But somewhere, where we have to get to a better communicating relationship there. Because, for example, one of the things I have not really thought about is what Mr. Mitchell brought up, that when you do straight percentage, people are already making more money, get more money. But in a way, that's the way salary schedules are constructed, you know. If you're up on the higher end, and there are different ways that you start school salary schedule, some reward longevity and loyalty and service more, some reward, give more emphasis to getting more credits if you're a certified person, you know, more training. So, there are different approaches to that. But it's true, see, we didn't talk about, well, is this the best way to distribute, straight percentage, or could there be a lump amount? You know, my dad was a manager in a company, and a lot of times at Thanksgiving or Christmas, all the employees would get a turkey. It was the same size turkey. That was their Christmas bonus, right? Well, that was the same amount, it wasn't a percentage, like if you were higher up, you got two turkeys. But salary schedules aren't actually constructed that way, and I think the percentage idea more reflects a common salary schedule approach, that when you're up higher, you're in line for a bigger increment. So, what I'm saying is, I hadn't really thought about that until Mr. Mitchell brought up. We can get a chance to really say, what are the possible options and ways to do this, to slice this cake, and then see if we concur on what the best thing would be. So, I do think, though, the idea of retention, because we've dealt with the idea of recruitment and retention in other meetings, and trying to get people here, and try to urge people to say that, "I'm here, and we're going to hurt," I think there's still validity to the idea of retention, and I, in one way, this great percentage, and it doesn't look equal, it's not equal, but I think it's a common way that we approach salary incentives.
I would like to answer this, if I may, Mr. President. As for the superintendent's report, it's my understanding, there are no reports at this meeting, I asked if we needed to put one on. You know, I think we need better communication, as we go into this first and third meeting, first meeting reports. Will you give a superintendent's report both, or will you just give a superintendent's report when we have the meeting for reports? I was told no reports, they put the superintendent's report on. The other one is, I know last meeting, this meeting, I'm hearing, we're in negotiations, and I'm talking with Cuddy Law, and he's anxious, and Cuddy Law has been in the education business since the forties, and he's like, "Wow, that's the first time we've ever heard You set the parameter of what we're looking at, and we've heard you state, since I've been back on leave, December, January, February, that our employees, our employees, not teachers, our employees, we need to get up more money. I have repeatedly heard that. We've worked hard to find the money. In the negotiations, the negotiations between the union and management is where they decide the parameters of the percentage, of who gets, the et cetera. That is where it's done, it comes to you for the approval, that's your portion of the proceedings. You're not at the table in negotiations, because in a sense, I don't know, let Andy explain it to you, he explains it a lot more colorfully than I am. That's just not procedures. We presented to you what we thought would be good to get to our employees. Yes, new teachers did get a raise last year, as per the legislature, through the governor's initiatives. They also got the incentive for housing, that's one of the reasons the union agreed to two percent for the first-year employees and four percent for all others, because they'd already received some. Those are the things we've looked at, those items put on the table. A large part of our employees are in the bargaining unit, pretty much everybody, from administrators and secretaries, everybody else is part of administration, I mean, is part of the bargaining unit. So, they were negotiating in good faith for all of the employees. That's their job. So, as for that, we've looked at the last five, five years, last three years, and I've been superintendent, our insurance has gone up anywhere from eight to twelve percent per year. Our other taxes, tax rates have changed. Teachers are taking home less today than they were five, six, seven years ago. Their rent hasn't gone down, the price of milk hasn't gone down. Hallelujah, in some ways, the price of gas has gone down, until it kills our budget for the state of Mexico. But, you know, the cost of living is going up, and our wages, our take-home check, our wages are staying the same, our take-home check has been going down. So, this was the voice of the employees who have ratified this agreement. I just want to bring that to you, and state that, you know, I would a hundred percent support this for employees.
Thank you for that.
What I really believe is that before even negotiation even took place, I think management needed to have sat down with the board and made us aware of this money and put, and let us put in our thinking of how it should be done. Instead, it went from management to, into negotiations, which I feel was wrong. And yes, we are all about, you know, helping our employees and trying to get them incentives, bonuses, and a little bit more money in their pocket because we all know that, yes, insurance is going up and their paychecks are lower. But like I say, this needs to be done fairly. And I think that all employees work just as hard within our district and they deserve to be treated equally. Therefore, money should be distributed equally, not on a percentage of, okay, you get paid more, so you're going to get more. And you get paid less and you know what, you're going to get less. That's not fair. And therefore, like I said, you know, management should be sat down with the board prior to negotiations.
One thing I want to also say, Mr. Treppe, is this is something that, once we left the boardroom the next day, a couple of days later, I got comments that the principals already knew about this. They were already informed that this was going to happen. And that bothers me because you didn't even have approval first to, to announce this to all the principals before, prior to the approval. And I, I don't think that was proper, I don't think that was right. Because I think you should have went and told the board, informed the board, and, and made sure it's approved before you go and announce it. And then the principals announce it to their staff. And then now, I mean, without us knowing, you know, they knew about it before the board did. And that's what, that's troublesome to me, sir, that you could do something and, and kind of back the board up into a corner too. When, and my question I have for either Mike or Johanna is, and I guess the union and yourself also. So there is no way that this can be changed to where we can give a fair, equal amount to everybody? Is that something that can still be negotiated now that you know what Kevin is saying? And renegotiate that where everybody gets a fair share of the amount equally than some people just getting $300 and then another person getting $2,200? I mean, that's not fair. They should, all our employees deserve an equal amount, just like what Kevin said. And if that's not doable, then tell me it's not doable, so then I know that, that we, that, I know.
Just like with your name, we can answer first, then we'll come to you if you don't want to answer. We posted the agendas on Thursdays as per the Open Meetings Act. And some people probably will their eyes because everybody feels that's an excuse. Ethically, it's a law that we will follow. We posted the agenda on a Thursday. We happened to be having a principals' meeting on a Thursday. Principals move out by the board members, board member packets are put out at the same time we posted the agenda. Principals came to us with a question, what is this on the agenda? We said we have had a tentative agreement with the union. It was a tentative agreement with the union to be voted on Saturday by union membership and to be voted on by the board Monday evening. It's advertised, they ask a question, we answer it as honestly and openly as possible. As for the negotiations, I will let Mr. Bernard answer them.
When this is negotiated, a lot of the same questions that were asked tonight, we discuss the negotiations. The percentage was seen as most fair. We don't negotiate on what the administration gets, we negotiate on the employees. As Mr. Hoodeman said, that is the way things actually work with the pay scale. Also, insurance is also based on how much you make. So if you're paying more in insurance, maybe you should make a little bit more on the, what we're calling the bonus there. As for process, some of your things being discussed are with, between the board and management. We don't have to do with that. We negotiate with management in good faith. Someone at the table has to have the authority to do stuff. Previous question about the board being present at the table, I would have to check to see if we could even sit down with the board. One board member at the table would not have authority.
I don't want to be at the negotiations, I, I agree with you. That's between you guys. I'm saying before it goes into negotiations, we should have the administration, a board, a business, a parent, a principal.
That's amongst you guys, that's amongst you guys.
Yeah, I'm not talking, I don't, we don't need to be in your negotiation.
All I know is that I sent a letter to the district before February 15th, wanting to open negotiations. The union has followed all the legal procedures. We've negotiated in good faith with the district. The board can either approve or not approve. If they don't approve, it will go back to negotiations and we will negotiate some more. If we come up with something, we will go through the ratification and approval process again. If we don't, if it goes to impasse, you know, anything can happen in negotiations.
What is impasse?
That's when neither side can agree on anything. And then it goes out to the state, then it costs the district money.
President? Just to footnote on the question of how the money would be distributed if it's used for this purpose, between the 4%, 2% approach and what Mr. Mitchell considers calling equal amount, I think. If a person gets a salary of $60,000 a year, which would be in the upper group, I think, the bonus of, or then the fourth percent would be $2,400. $40,000 salary would get $1,600. And $25,000 salary would get $1,000. Interestingly, that mental number that I happen to pick, $40,000, is somewhat maybe in the middle range of salaries. If you take the 1,724 employees and divide the 2.9 million by that 1,724, and give everybody an equal portion of that, it would be a little over $1,600 per person. Just, just the knowledge that comes out, I thought I would do that a little bit.
Thank you for your information, Mr. Human. With all the discussions that we've had today, I'd like to approve a one-time payment to qualified Calhoun County County School contract employees for the retention agenda.
Okay, here's a motion by Mr. Manini to approve a one-time payment to qualifying Calhoun County County contract employees for retention agenda. Motion on the floor, Mr. Manini, hold on.
Mr. Manini?
I'm not sure we're done with discussion, Mr. President.
Discussions, so we continue discussion. Or motion to continue the discussion. Mr. Manini, I'll hold your motion. Discussion continues, Ms. Thanks.
I was just going to make two caveats, that that total dollar amount includes benefits. So the actual amount distributed would be less. The minimum benefits that are required are 23.55%. So that dollar amount includes benefits. And then also that, if you're looking at employees who maybe have started early partly through this year, so the percentages kind of reflect that you would pay them based upon what they've been paid at a pro-rated rate. Whereas giving everybody an equal amount would mean that somebody who's been here 10 years and somebody who's been here two weeks would get the same amount. Just very quickly.
Well, after listening, I usually would like to wait until the end to, you know, see where I, I see on this. And, you know, just looking at it, it's something about, you know, Mr. Manini saying that it's a big funding that we have, we have for our students. But as I see it, our teachers are one of the most valuable resources we have for our teachers, for our students. I know, Mr. Mitchell, has a lot of concerns regarding the funding formula. And I, I, I was still the same calculation, I believe, Mr. Manini was, because interestingly enough, we came with the same amounts, 4%, $40,000. So, and looking at, at it, but my concern is that this is all for, it's all for employee, long-term employees. So this would include, excuse me, our, our, as the superintendent's and so forth. And I know they make a higher amount, it would be a higher pay. So that's where my concern is at too as well. Mr. Bernard, I spoke in a critical, said that he had to send a letter out on the 15th, I'm assuming in February. And I know part of our job as school board is, we are in charge of finances. So how, how, how could the president know, you know, we're getting kind of funding on February 15th? And we didn't know about it. I mean, I knew since I came on board that there was funding coming, but I didn't know, we were told that, we don't know when it would come in. It would come in next week, next two weeks, next year. But, you know, surprised it came in and it was the agenda. So it's sort of like, like a way to put the teachers to the front line and say, let's use the teachers as the, as the, how would you say? The, the way to put them in the front lines and say, let's use them for this race. So, you know, I see it that way, but don't get me wrong, I support our teachers, our wholeheartedly, our employees. But, you know, to see this is coming at us real quick, slap this face, you know, it's kind of, kind of, like you say, awkward sitting here trying to find the right questions and answers. So it's, it's kind of, I'm pretty sure you get a retention agenda. My point, Mr. Bernard, do you have something to say as well?
Just while this kind of bothers me that everyone's talking about teachers, it's not all about teachers, it's about everybody. We took everyone into consideration, the secretaries, custodians, the board's people paid. It's not just all about teachers, number one. And it wasn't that I knew anything that anyone else didn't know. This collective bargaining agreement states that for any negotiations, one side or the other has to give the other a letter by the 15th of February. That's how I know I sent it on time.
Mr. Bernard, question. Okay, you gave notice on the 15th, and you want to start negotiations on the retention?
I would have to look at the letter that I sent. I don't know if I sent it exactly on the 15th, I've sent it on before, I'd have to look at my copy. I don't know if I sent it exactly on the fifteenth, I've sent it on before, I'd have to look at my copy.
And then, and Mr. Bernard, concerning that, we just got the last thing of last week. So, but when we were starting, you were starting negotiating with the teachers?
We have a two-year contract till the 2017. So the only thing that we can, we have four items that we can negotiate. Calendar, length of the agreement, when it starts and ends, and money. So I put it in to talk about money. So that was, I had to put it in before the fifteenth. We didn't know what the legislation was going to do, if it would give us more money. We didn't know what the district had available. But I wasn't going to not put a letter in and something come up and we wouldn't be able to talk about it. You know, that would look a little fishy. We do have that right to do according to the Public Employee Bargaining Act that I want to do according to the CBA that we already have in place. You guys can look up and see, yes, that's our process.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard, for justifying that. And obviously, I was referring to our teachers because they are a lot of valuable assets to our district as well as employees. And our students are close, everyone is what makes a good student a student. So with that, I know that we have more questions concerning Mr. Henneman.
First of all, may I ask a clarification, Mr. Benini? I think your motion was to approve the proposal as we received it, is that correct?
That is correct, that was written in the second summary as a motion.
I don't want to make things messier, but I want to observe that from a mathematical standpoint, it would not be that difficult to make a formula whereby everybody got a certain amount. And then those on the salary schedule, as you go up, would get still a sliding scale or percentage. It would take, we could do that at this meeting. But it's something that would be within the capacity of business, I'm just unsure to compute. I don't know if you want to go through that as a board. I can accept the proposal as given because, like I say, I think that's the way salary schedules are normally done. But I am pathetic with the idea that the people who are already on the top aren't going to get that much more. But that's, you know, that's the way it is when you start out. I mean, that's the way it is when you take the job. If you have certain qualifications, you get more, or certain experience, you get more. That's what a salary schedule is about. So I don't think it's somehow immoral, you know. People who have been missing the pay they would have gotten in the past number of years, and that would have been a higher pay, that in a sense read, what's the word I'm looking for? To give, to catch up with that. They would have been, the people on the top would have been missing more pay in the past years than the people on the bottom, if you give a bit. So that way, I think it's equitable, but you know, the idea of what's fair, the idea of what's mathematically equal, I don't know, is the same thing. And I just, but I throw that out there, we wanted to complicate it. Otherwise, I don't think it's unfair to do it on a percentage basis because I think that's the way salaries fit into it. And the way the loss the past years would have impacted people.
Okay, we have a motion table still by Mr. Benini to approve the sentence. Why don't we go with that motion first and see what happens? The vote, and then afterwards, if you're in the commission, you guys have, whatever the board decides. Is how you want to proceed with it? Or how do you want this, or do the board first?
Can I just ask one question? Mr. Lynn, is that what's asked? Is that what's asked? So what we would have to do is back in the negotiation with him with that. So the probably more able to take exceptional amount of time, but it would depend on what was agreeable. And then we would have to actually decide what the percentage would be on a sliding scale and how would they determine that was fair. And then we would need to determine if there would be a rate for late start of the week. So no, but there would be additional things to consider and we would have to make determination on, is it going to be an amount, is it going to be a sliding scale, how would that be determined?
My question, okay, comes to Bernard. Sitting down with management, the board, and then having them come back for renegotiation, could this take place by our next board meeting and able to have an approval on a different view or a different, an equal view that we feel on the board? And then have the management meet with you again for negotiations?
My team, I don't know what their schedule is like. We usually rely on who's the, has the least amount of time on the calendar. Whether it's the superintendent, who's always busy, or the attorney from the district that's handling it. That's what we go by. As far as if it goes back, what the team is going to decide, whether they're, you guys are basically negotiating right here. When it goes back, we may not decide to do it. We already have Article forty-five in there. This would be takes Article forty-five. The way it is written, if we could go back to negotiations and discuss this, we might decide to keep Article forty-five the way it is, and the union would get the money and decide how it's distributed. I can't tell what my team's going to decide. Anything can happen in negotiations.
Can you explain Article forty-five, the union will get the money, what amount of money would the union get?
According to the article that's already in there, the impact date, forty-five, section B, I believe, we get money, anything over five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand goes to the district. And we get anything over that to improve the percentages. Now, what you guys are discussing, whether to approve or not, you replaces that article.
May I ask a follow-up question there? That was one of the items again where I think we weren't fully clear in the last meeting. Because it says if the unit value, if the unit value does not increase, has the unit value increased or not increased at this point? Because a conditional clause, the value does not increase.
It did increase.
Value does not increase, then GMC has pledged all proceeds.
It did, and we negotiated in good faith to replace that. For us, it was a no-brainer. Increased money for everyone in the district, the laws pay, secretaries, custodians, everybody. Why not? And it was the most fair way to do it, was the percentages, that is the most fair.
I don't think we were told whether the unit value was increased or not.
I can't.
So I'm sorry, the unit value was issued January thirty-first as is required by Mexico State statute that was issued by the Public Education Department. The unit value went from four thousand twenty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents to four thousand thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents, an increase of ten dollars in the unit value. I believe, kind of as a caveat, Article forty-five does not stipulate the unit value. It does look specifically at prior impacting payments.
Okay, but if I understand right, if, since the unit value did increase, this particular section doesn't apply, it's nullified, it's moved, right? Because it says if it does not, I'm sorry, if it does not decrease, take it back.
And that is kind of the caveat of, you know, there may, because the unit value is not, the final unit value is not released until January thirty-first. That's, it's, you know, it's very cautious of us to put that type of language in there.
Like a double negative, but it doesn't say if it increases, it says if it does not decrease, I'll catch up.
So do we, the board have everything in hand, have an idea of what's going on? And I would like to remind the board as well, anything you have tonight to say, you know, like the president said, would affect the negotiation process. So I just want to remind the board, because otherwise, pretty much over the board, I haven't decided something overall. But we just thought we have that motion by Mr. Benini to approve the one-time payment. With that, you have the comments, questions? If not, we will call, there's a foreword matter. Uh, will come?
Mr. Henneman?
Yes.
Mrs. Manelli, comment? I have a comment to make before I give my vote. I just want, I just want individuals to know that I'm very hesitant and I wish, again, that we were brought to the table with a committee to talk about this because I would rather have done it fairly across the board, where everybody gets an equal amount, than the shepherds and the assistant superintendents are already making a lot, but they're going to get a big bonus again. Again, there are teachers that are getting free housing and extra stipend or, I know that's all explained, but they still getting bonuses on the side. And then now, end of the year, I think they're even going to get more again with other ones. And that's my, that's my three concerns that I have. And I'm going to ask, Mr. President, that you make a directive that we are involved in the budget decisions before this happens again. I don't like being in this position, I do not appreciate it. I think it's disrespectful that we, as a board, do not know what is happening with the budget when we are the oversight of the district's budget. So I, those are my comments, and I vote yes in favor of it because I know our staff deserve, even though it's unfair that other people are going to get more money than the people that are in the classroom working directly with our children.
Mr. Mitchell?
I would just like to say before I do my vote that, you know, I really think that this should have been handled properly. I think our superintendent should have brought the attention of the board along with our financial advisor, Javanna. I think that all of this should have been done prior to this. I know that all our employees do deserve this retention. I just wish that it was across the board, everybody would be getting the same amount. I mean, I know that they're saying that even if they were hired ten days, but I do believe there should be a period in there before somebody is considered permanent. And I know that ten days is not the limit, I think, I don't know what it is, but I know somebody that comes in and is hired for ten days is not, shouldn't be considered permanent. And I really feel for our custodians and our cooks who work very hard. And I know a custodian in Tohatchee who is making thirteen thousand and it's not, I mean, this retention is going to make outcome, but you know, it's not as, it's not like, it's not going to be like somebody who's making forty or sixty thousand. And that's what I feel is very unfair. But I will vote yes at this time for the one-time retention.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Thank you, board, for voting for this despite it's a big controversy here. I know I don't make more than at least fifteen thousand, so, and I have a family to support, so. It's something big that our employees in the district get some good money, so. People first.
Okay, with that, we'll continue on now to our next item of the agenda, which is seventy-three, approval of the five health wellness policies for 2016 and 2017. I believe during the last meeting, this was a discussion item, and there was recommendation for approval during this board meeting. But this, do we have a motion? Go. Mr. Henneman?
Jump in, quick on this one because, okay, thank you. I distributed to the members and superintendent, secretary, copies of an energy drink policy at the last meeting. We received the wellness policy revision proposed for this coming year from the Wellness Committee. I indicated at that time that I found it to be a very comprehensive and strong policy or set of policies, but that I would not want to vote for it if it did not have, what we discussed earlier, a concern about a ban on energy drinks. And so I drafted for the board's consideration, an energy drink policy to be included as part of the draft we were given. And I want to point out, I think we have a choice here. The policy itself is only one short paragraph at the top of the page. It prohibits any student from possessing, using, and/or distributing energy drinks while on school premises, during any school-related activities, including transportation to or from school, and alternate activities, and the individualized reasonable suspicion of violation of the district's substance abuse policy, which should read, I'm sorry, should say "energy drink" because it hit modest and took language from other parts of the district's policy. District's energy drink policy. Should say, may result in serious seizure by a school administrator designated. That can be a policy, but when you have a policy with students that can be violated, then often people want to know what enforcement, what are the provisions for enforcement? So the second center, but the second section on definitions simply gives a definition of energy drink and possession and use, and then it lists consequences. And the consequences are modeled after what's in our student behavioral handbook. So, I'll come back to that. Then on the, on the second page, it gives the rationale for this. I don't think the rationale has to be part of the policy. I presented that just as backup in terms of the information that we've discussed before, these kinds of things. I would appreciate a recommendation, I think, from the superintendent as he works with policy and administrative and principal do, whether it's desirable to spell out the consequences or simply use the first paragraph or the first paragraph of definitions as far as what we put in the wellness policy itself.
My recommendation, Mr. Henneman, I appreciate you bringing it to me. My recommendation is actually to make the consequences the same as nicotine and cigarettes on school campus because to me, it's the same harmful effect. It would then be consistent across the board, whether you're talking tobacco, cigarettes, or the energy drink, which probably is a little more dangerous in a sense. Also, we just listed out here, you start getting into multiple misbehaviors where they have a classroom, a classroom misbehavior, maybe a truancy or whatever. Now, there are two, and then they have two energy drinks, they're now at four. So when you start talking multiple misbehaviors at the secondary school, it's going to lead to expulsion a lot quicker or contract. So I would rather just look at it more of the, you look at it from the tobacco and nicotine, it's more of a education. There are some consequences, you know, they have four or five offenses. But, you know, the first offense, you're referred to the counselor. And they can start seeing the effects and such. We do have some great presentations, as I said, from the NMAA on the studies of these drinks and the dangers. And people think that it's high grading of, in a sense, it's doing the opposite, which can be extremely harmful to actually having vital organs shut down. So I would say if we could just make the energy drink policy, put the policy in there what it is, but then put it as the same board policy with tobacco, nicotine would be my recommendation. And I wholeheartedly support what you all are doing here from the committee.
Okay, let me just say, that's interesting because I actually modeled this on the nicotine policy in the student handbook as far as the consequences. I was looking at it a little differently, thinking nicotine is more serious, more more understood by kids already, right, that that's not something they should be doing. So I did soften the consequences a bit so that, for instance, a second offense, it says one day in-school suspension, or the nicotine one might say up to three days. So that, it's the same idea, except the consequences are softer at the initial stages, the first, second offense, and maybe the third one. Because I think it includes the option of out-of-school suspension also. But otherwise, the pattern is basically the same type of thing, progressive. I'm sorry, I'll be, the next one.
My phone doesn't like GMC's board policies or something. Mr. Ray, can we put discipline like on the front page like we did the other meeting? Because, I mean...
If we go under the parents, I think it's the first item, under the parents, whole page.
It was underneath the tab. Tobacco, well between secondary, first offense, parent notification and mandatory conference, either up to three days in actual suspension or alternative discipline, due to a referral to counselor. Second offense, parent notification and conference, up to five days in actual school, alternative year events for a parent. This would really strengthen. This was really changed, I'm going to say, two years ago when G. Williams changed the micropolicies. And it's been marked quite different since I was a principal. When I was a principal, first offense was counselor. There was no out-of-school parent conference, referral to counselor, unless there was an athletic activity, it was immediate ejection.
I only thought if we go with, if we go with the stronger consequences, then I think it becomes really important because I think a lot of kids don't see it as that big a deal. That they really need to be apprised of that at the beginning of the year, or whenever this goes into effect. And they really need to know the consequences of this is not something, all it did was bring something that's, you know, stronger than a pop. To be fair, they need to be alert and informed of all things by our...
I think overall, I concur with Mr. Chappetti on this. The more stronger language made on the consequences, you know, it would stop diversion among young children bringing energy drinks into the school. And it's something that I am very hesitant to have around the children knowing that, you know, if it's okay for me to drink energy drink, it's okay for them to drink it. So I kind of refrain from having around children as well. And I think it's something we should work with, and just be in the staff, that it is, that way, you know, it won't. In reality, you know, we give the out-of ours and out-of school system.
I just want to comment that, you know, I've seen working, doing my clinicals in the hospital or clinics, that this has a major impact on our children. I've seen kids with their hearts ready to fall out of their, bounce out of their chest on this stuff. And I see them pass out on the basketball court because there's too much. And it disrupts the rhythm of their heart, and, you know, that's what we're preventing. Even though they may like the stuff, it's just, you know, when I, when I started my clinicals and I saw what I did, and I saw my own children drinking, and I was like, no, no, I don't want this in my house. So, and that's how we are, we have to take care of the children. And I did have those strong statements to them that we don't want this. They may be mad, they may be upset, but that's who we are, is Michael and Jack and Ethan. That's what we do, we protect our children, even though they may not realize it that we're protecting them. At this time, we are. So I really agree with the force, the one that Mr. Chappetti had the first time. So I really agree with the force, the one that Mr. Chappelli had the first time.
I think that the consequences on this is fair. Not only does it affect China's heart and rubbing, and just that manner. You know, I have a nephew who was drinking monsters, three or four in a day, and now is having diabetes problems. So, and they, and he was actually flown out to Phoenix Hospital for defiance, and had to stay in the hospital for a week until they could get his blood sugars to where they should be. And they, and, and his energy drinks were a strong factor of that, causing diabetes. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion and to approve.
With using the tobacco nicotine consequences.
It was a motion by Mr. Mitchell to approve the revision of policy regarding nicotine drinks with recommendation of Mr. Chappelli in regards to any consequences related to the nicotine amount back. Was that, roll call this?
Mr. Edeman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Ms. Michaelito?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Can I ask some questions? Will you give this up to the schools? First week back from spring break, educating kids over a week, have every teacher read it in their homerooms, et cetera, and actually start a daybook?
I think it's great idea.
So we bring a book to school?
Okay, thank you, that was so, that was a contender. This is here now, so agenda, seventeen, who owns this, twenty seventeen, U.S.B.A., Excellence for Achievement Award, David Rick Murphy, Dr. Lawrence, Ondrad, Dr. Bruce Tempest, and Ryan Ashner as recipients. Board members, Mr. Menini?
I was informed the night that Dr. Tempest was had surgery of pancreas, pancreatic.
Not prostate, thank you.
It was a cancer surgery, do you know?
What's that?
It was a cancer surgery.
I'm not sure, just from a card, he's had it.
No worries, go.
He's back home recuperating slowly. We all love Dr. Tempest, he does not like to be sitting, sort of, he's guaranteeing, sort of like you, bouncing on the wall.
Mr. Diaz, I would like to go ahead and motion.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell to approve twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, U.S.B.A., Excellence for Achievement Awards, roll call this?
Mr. Edeman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Thank you, board, next item on the agenda is seventeen, which is a bill of specific date and process for specialty evaluation. This is going to be action item, so I believe we have to set a date and a process for specialty evaluation. Board members, Mr. Menini?
With my medical agenda that's coming up, operation on this risk, collect risk, I'll paint out more tomorrow, but I'm available on Wednesdays.
Wednesdays for Mr. Menini?
This Wednesday.
Mr. Menini?
Spring break, that's all.
Or the following Wednesday, it doesn't matter, it's just, morning or afternoon. The thirtieth, I'm supposed to be serving at Washington Elementary as a rotating chef. In April, we need to do it for as soon as possible, I agree. But looking in April, the first week in April, fourth week in April, I've got health issues that are going on.
Mr. Edeman? It has been, my understanding or my assumption that the superintendent is to be, if he chooses to provide us with a hard fact documentation of how he's, how they're certain things, and that takes a little time. Hopefully, it's already, the process is already being started, but I'm thinking this Wednesday is, if, if the process is for us to receive that information and consider it in our deliberation, then probably shouldn't do it this Wednesday.
I agree, I agree.
It could be at least next week.
I still haven't, you asked about the artifacts, I still haven't seen the.
You haven't received the information?
Mr. President, I believe that is.
You mean the evaluation?
The evaluation, yes, that should have been processed and given to him many moves ago.
I thought, Mr. Menini, I thought it was something you said you had before.
That's right, that's what we, that we did.
That's why we, so what's this one?
I'd like to clarify, you had that before, but I was only given four areas.
Yeah.
I was given four areas to keep artifacts on, and that's what the board thought was the most important. And now you're going to the fifty some, I've never seen the fifty some. I have the four that were the board, the board's priorities, first time.
Now, the only ones that we did, we approved on was to, that Mr. Edeman approved to give those five areas of excellence, fairness, needs improvement, whatever it is.
I've seen that.
At different levels. I can't find it, my.
There's a new one.
We didn't have heard that one, we have to go.
This one here, this one here.
We approved the contents that Mr. Menini presented.
Right.
And then the next meeting, we amended the ranking part.
Right.
But from just the two level to a five level. But I don't know who.
No, this is, this is what I have, is this one, I found it up?
No. The one you presented.
This one.
Yeah, that's the one I got, but I thought that was.
I did remember, but they're even more new, because that's.
Um, that needs to be redone then, and put those distributory actions in the form that we approved.
Yeah, I don't hear the board meeting last night, we did approve the evaluation that Mr. Menini presented us. But there was a, a part where they wanted to amend the evaluation to include the rating system, what Mr. Edeman did talk about.
Did we put that?
Yeah.
All we need to do is put the post on there.
Did we, but we haven't put that yet. Or we did.
Yeah, we did, we did that a little bit.
That was approved last week, or last week.
Ms. Diaz was given the amendment, the rating scale to five, but neither of us have been given the actual sort of one.
Because this is what, what, you're missing that, you guys already asked.
I was never given that. The board, the board, in previous years, the board looked at that, and it shows three to four priorities, board priorities, and that's what I was evaluating and produced artifacts for, not the whole package, three or four. We're now choosing to do the whole thing, but they don't have a copy of the whole thing, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Can Ms. Diaz provide that?
Can I make a copy of it and get it back to you?
Yeah, I think the only thing we had to change was the year, and over your goals, and then all this is job responsibility, communication, staff relations, community relations, instructional leadership, organizational management, values and ethics, annual goals, your vision, and then the overall checklist. Because that, that's what they said they used before, I didn't have that.
I, you've used it, I didn't have it.
Mr. Edeman, question to Edeman?
I had just the one page documenting priority areas, arms, achievement, communication with stakeholders, almost two years ago.
I didn't.
But now I have it, I will start collecting artifacts for you.
I believe with that, with that time and the place, and giving the time to have the superintendent collect those artifacts, you know, I would think we would have something before the next board meeting in Navo, so something before, times that I would be given enough time to collect all their information and hold that, the evaluation meeting sometime before the regular board meeting in Navo.
Okay, so.
So by the good time to accommodate Wednesdays, they, I think a good time to do the evaluation would be like, Mr. Menini, if you're available, Wednesdays, a feasible date would be about April 13, and that's the Wednesday before the Navo Elementary School meeting. That would accommodate, considering, as well as scheduling, anything ahead, I don't know, by, by then we would have, I was hoping to have the ready as well, so, but, what's a month? So, it's thirteen.
I think that's a great idea for the thirteenth, for the final evaluation. Are we going to have one earlier?
It's up to the board, I guess, when they decide that, but they don't take this evaluation twice, it'll be up to the board.
So this is not the final?
It's up to the board, it's up to you, final evaluation, I think, that's. I'm just asking, should there be another before that, that we discussed?
Can we, can we do one on the sixth and then the thirteenth?
Uh.
I don't know, I really don't know how you guys did this last year, so I just kind of.
The sixth I have, I have to draw some stuff. I read that I have on the sixth.
You can do it to four cameras.
The seventh?
May I have your notes?
Well, is the thirteenth too late, Mr. President? If, if there's adequate time for Mr. Chappelli to gather and supply documentation artifacts he wants, we have those all at hand.
Then we just use that.
Want to be fair to him, because it's just, it's practically a term that takes time to do that, but also for our sake, that we know if we've got everything that we have, then I think we want to meet him on the thirteenth.
So do you have their sound coming in?
I think, I think a good time would be to have the thirteenth morning, you're all here, you'll be all night delivery, I know the house, so, six to five, you have a whole time. I think, you know, the morning, the thirteenth would be a good time, you know, the whole day for the evaluation, so. Tiny in the morning, I have a whole time, you all went to bed, you're ready.
Five thirty.
No.
He knows you love that.
Oh wait, I don't understand that either.
Ten?
Ten five, what do you think?
I don't care, seven, nine, five, or ten.
Please, I'm talking to Mr. President. Okay, it says this is an action item, I need a motion to approve to set a date and time, the motion?
Mr. President, I'll go ahead and motion to have, have it on April, sorry, April 13, at 10:00 a.m.
Motion by Mr. Menini to approve the superintendent evaluation for April 13, 2016, at 10:00 a.m., roll call this?
Mr. Edeman?
Yes.
Mr. Menini?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Diaz?
Ah, yes. Thank you, board members, for that preparation there. A final item on the agenda is going to be eight H, approve of the board, RFP for proprietary member services.
For president, members of the board, superintendent, Chappelli, members of the audience. I was able to distribute this to you this evening, I did, I did have it on the agenda, we were able to finalize some details. This has been a very complex project, that I have two very dedicated members of my staff standing behind me that have worked very hard on. This is something that, okay, they, they've been working on. So this is going to be a very beneficial project to our district. This is going to be ninety percent funded by E-Rate Services. Then they are going to actually contribute an additional five percent, and the state is going to contribute on a reimbursement basis, an additional five percent. So this is really going to allow us to get some services in our district that are really going to benefit, benefit our students at no cost to the district. Now, there will be a recurring cost, of course, for utilization of the services on a monthly basis, just as there are currently with any of our other connections, but this will fund the construction and implementation of those services. As you can see, the information regarding the award is on here. Unfortunately, we were not able to award for SAGI, just based upon the dollar amounts that came in on those bids, as is noted in the information that you were provided. And what I'm going to do right now is turn this mic over to Marco Abayen, who is our chief procurement officer and director of procurement, and then also Bart Stanley, who is our director of communications and our STARS team. If you have any questions related to this, these gentlemen have worked very hard on this proposal, and they can answer those for you.
So, as the information provided to you, this is going to actually provide fiber optics that will run from our district office all the way down to Davis-Skeet Elementary, and then on to Reima Elementary and Reima High School. As you can think, the fiber optics is the thing, and actually is the fastest mode of transportation of both voice and data for us. And so this will help get data back and forth from both internet, testing, phones, everything under the sun that you can think of that can transfer without that. As far as SAGI guys concerned, we actually issued another RFP today or tomorrow. We're waiting on our E-Rate consultant to give us another look at that RFP that we sent it in. But we'll be coming back to you next month with that award. But we're hoping that we can get a better bid for that one. Sagerland Communications is the vendor that has been selected for this project down south. As we know, they are a local company, and they are, they've owned, and so far they've provided us the best thing for our budget, if you're willing to tell. Mr. Stanley?
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. One of the things that Mr. Bateman did not say is currently our service to Reima and to Davis-Skeet is a mobile broadband, it's a microwave radio system. And our costs are pretty high on that, our monthly recurring costs. The monthly recurring costs on this are going to be, I don't know, about eight thousand dollars a month, rather than sixty thousand dollars a month. This is a big savings for us. But not only that, we're giving them ten times the service. So, this is a change in E-Rate rules, where E-Rate is, is happy to pay more money upfront, because they know we're going to save a lot of money in the long run. And so this is a true win-win for, for our schools. Unfortunately, we have, we had twenty-three schools on this RFP, and only one company bid on all twenty-three of them. We felt like their proposal didn't have all the costs included with it. Another thing is, so technically, we had three companies that bid on the three schools in the south. One company, that their proposal was incomplete, that bid on all the schools here in town. And then the three companies that bid on SAGI. SAGI was really too cost prohibitive. Our E-Rate consultant. Segi was really too cost prohibitive, um, our E-rate consultant felt like, um, he didn't think we could get that funded to E-rate because of, of the cost. We put it back out for bid, so that, um, and, and we're giving people other options. What we put out before was get us fiber for Gallup to Segi, and you guys know it's a hundred plus miles. But, this time, we have fiber that goes to Crown Point, so we're gonna try to work with some providers, and work with a provider that has our service in Crown Point and say, "Come on, can't you go the next 50 miles? We really need to have this fiber." That's the real true weak link in our network, um, because there's just not that sort of fiber out there. We've also asked and said, "Let's go ahead and say, could we get a wireless solution out there?" Because that's better than, than basically the telephone lines we're trying to run on now out there. Another solution we opted for is just a direct internet connection. It's pretty close to Cuba, so if somebody could come and just give us an internet connection, that would be another alternative. So, for us, the, the one thing about E-rate is, this, um, and I guess I should say for the state, and Ron, you can tell me if I'm a speaker for the PSCOC, the funding is from PSCOC or PSFA, and essentially, it's called a broadband efficiency correction, and so that paying 5% is because these schools do not have fiber at all. So, um, it is real important, and we, we continue to work and see if we can get Segi funded, and we're gonna probably have to ask for a special meeting, because it'll need this timeline in April. But, I am really excited, it's gonna be great for, I mean, we're gonna give 10 times the service, and a fraction of the month, thank you, Mr. Stanley.
Do you guys have any questions?
Um, so if this is approved tonight, when will Reima and Daviskeet have these services? Will it be next year?
So, this is for the E-rate funding year of 2016-17, and it is an ambitious project to get fiber all the way down there, you know, trenching, and holes, and leasing, and, um, all the stuff that the phone companies are gonna have to do. So, our plan is to have a turn, a startup date of probably June 1st, 2017, where we'll be keeping the same service most of the entire year, but if we can't get it before June 1st, we have to have it by June 17th. So really, this is not gonna be something our kids are gonna, we're not gonna have this benefit beginning of the year, it's gonna be the end of next year, but it's gonna be a tremendous saving for the district, and it's gonna be a real good benefit to, to, you know, the, uh, site on the, let me ask you a question. Sacred Wind is already working for a chapter, so that they can make a connection at Mine Hill, the hospital, Zuni can probably benefit from this, uh, there's gonna be a lot of people that will benefit from, from us giving this money to this project. Mr. Menini?
Just a question, now, I'm thinking about vandalism on these lines that are being put in, is there a circuit covering for these lines that are going in, so they won't be stripped or anything?
Well, I don't, I think that you can say that to me like, look like we're gonna do mostly overhead, and...
So, Mr. Menini, we, um, this project is, we looked at three different options, um, we looked at what we have now in town with Centric, it's called Lit Service, so they manage the lines, they manage the maintenance and all that stuff, and we paid for that. We also looked at a leased dark, or leased dark fiber. Dark fiber, you know, they always joke about Star Wars, you know, it's the evil side. We're not gonna actually own this fiber, Sacred Wind will come in, so if there's, if it's cut, it's gonna be their responsibility to fix it. We're just gonna lease the lines from them, um, and that's a very common practice. We thought, we thought, you know, we really thought about, do we wanna own our own fiber? And when we started talking about between here and Segi, we don't have the resources to manage 100-plus miles of fiber, so, um, so we went with the leased fiber option. Thank you.
I always say vandalism, I say, I say the typical, not, not call them before they dig, digging, carry themselves. What we typically see with fiber between...
Or someone thinks it's cotton, and they cut it, or it's not, they just leave it. Mr. Meneman?
So just to be clear, the, the 2.7 million is to pay them to put in the fiber from wherever to Daviskeet, Reima schools, and then what beyond that, I mean, in terms of the maintenance part, they, they get it into the, up and into the school buildings, and then they maintain it inherently, or...
And then like, like any other service that we have, we just pay a monthly recurring charge for that, um, and they maintain it, um, if there's any upgrades that need to happen to the equipment that comes into our building, we call it terminated equipment, um, they take care of that, um, so we just pay our, I mean, it's $2,600 a month per site, um, for that recurring cost, and they maintain everything. So we're just paying for the travel.
And that's a, Segi would be another, a separate award, compared to Segi.
Yes, sir, we'll bring that to you next morning, we hope.
If we get some good responses. It's a hard, that's a hard project to solve, so, so there's not, there's not a lot of other entities out there that could benefit from, like, South, or Yaxoni, and Mine Hill, and Ringa Chapter.
Mr. Menini?
Uh, you said there's no cost in the school.
So, what the cost will be would be those recurring costs that were previously mentioned, we will still have to pay that recurring cost of actually utilization of the services, but the initial implementation, the construction that's required, and the installation of the fiber, that will be at no cost. Now, I will caveat and say that the 5% that the state is doing is on a reimbursement basis, so we will have to pay upfront, and then be reimbursed for our cost.
The other thing is, the, the cost we're paying now for recurring is a lot more expensive.
Yeah, because it will be a cost savings overall after we make this transition, it will just be that initial, and thank goodness it's being picked up by both federal and state agencies for us to get that initial implementation.
And this is all part of the Governor's Broadband Initiative Correction Program, um, that's where the state's 5% is coming in, um, the state will actually match up to 10% on, on other schools, but since our E-rate is, we're 90-10 district, E-rate gets up 90%, USEC picks up 5, the state picks up the other 5%.
Mr. Stanley? I don't think this is a no-brainer. We're gonna save money, we can use that money to replace cells in our operations, I do so move to approve this E-rate funding. Who, by Mr. Menini, who would have awarded RFP for wide area of work? Uh, Mr. Michael?
Mr. Meneman?
Yes.
Ms. Michaela Lethal?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Ness?
Yes.
Okay, once we're in, into our agenda...
President? Mr. Menini adjourns us. He gets that perfect. I do think that, uh, as we go forward here, we need to consider whether this alternating between report meeting and actual meeting is doing serving our purposes best, it may be that it's the legs of things, but I, I don't oppose anything, but in terms of, since we don't have future agenda items on the agenda either, I just, I just think we need to see if we're getting done what we want to get done there.
Okay, uh, okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Menini to adjourn, hold on?
Do you need to go?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley, Michael.